Welcome, everybody. Welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for today's agenda, Monday, April twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five. Just a couple of reminders for public participation. There are three ways to submit public comments. Comments, number one, submit written comments by meeting day. Number two, submit written comments during the meeting. And number three, attend the meeting in person. To submit written comments by meeting day, please email the city clerk at cityclerkdailycity.org and include public comment in the subject line. All written comments received by four P M. on a meeting day will be provided to the City Council prior to the meeting. Please advise emailed comments received after four P M. on the meeting date are not guaranteed to be received by the City Council prior to the meeting. Comments are not read out loud into the record. You could also, during the meeting, you could also visit www.dailycity.org backslash agendas to submit comments using the public comment form to address the City Council on a specific item or during the public comment period. And such comments are delivered to the City Council and City staff during the meeting and may be read into the record at the time they are received. To speak at the meeting in person, please complete a spirit card located at the entrances to the council chamber and submit to a staff member as early in the meeting as possible. Okay, and so I would like to call to order, beginning with our land and then land acknowledgement. The city of Daly City acknowledges that we are an ancestral lands of the Ramatouche Aloney peoples. We recognize their enduring connection to this region and honor their history, culture, and contributions. As indigenous peoples of this land, we affirm their sovereign rights as original inhabitants of this land and pay respects to the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Ramatouche Aloney peoples. Second, we're gonna go ahead and do a pledge to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was beautiful. I haven't, yeah, I was, I agree with the Vice Mayor. I haven't heard our pledge sound that bull in this council chambers ever. I'm gonna throw it down to this, our City Clerk for roll call, please.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Present.
Ms. Proaño?
Present.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, present.
Ms. Manalo?
Present.
Dr. Rod?
Present. Okay, item number one is what we're all here for. I'm gonna go ahead and pass it over to my colleague, Councilmember Proaño, to introduce the students of Marjorie H. Tobias Elementary for their walk audit presentation.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I was quite impressed with the presentation of these young people here. I don't think I'd seen such a very detailed and heartfelt presentation in a long time. It was very detailed and I hope, oh, we're getting to hear it, right? You guys were amazing, so I, I don't wanna waste any time. I'd like to welcome you on behalf of all of us. We are extremely excited to have you here.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Amara and I'm a fifth grader from Tobias Elementary School. We're going to tell you about a project we worked on with San Mateo County Office of Education, Safe Routes to School, and Stanford. Tobias is a Jefferson Elementary School that has many people who walk to school. Many students face challenges on the way to school. Most students use the drop off line to get to school. I also use the curb side to get to school and I faced a lot of problems such as crowding, traffic, and many adults break the rules by making U turns through the cones.
Good evening, Council members. It's good to be with you. I'm from the Stanford Our Voice team. My name is Sophia Portillo and I'm just gonna share a little bit about the method that we engage with all of the students before they share their experience and findings with you all. So the Stanford Our Voice initiative is out of the School of Medicine and our work is to offer tools to community members so that they can identify issues in their community and advocate to promote healthier environments. And so we have an ongoing partnership with the San Mateo County Office of Education and we've been able to do projects with other young people like this group and this group has really been exceptional. I just wanna share that the method that we're using is citizen science and citizen science can be broadly defined as members of the public engaging with the scientific community to advance knowledge and also better their communities. So we did citizen science by the people, by the students. I just wanna share a little bit of context here that there's been many projects that have used this kind of method, Our Voice method and citizen science broadly, all over our country and all over the world, in New Orleans, in Colombia, and all over. And so it's an evidence-based model and it's really community-driven. It's student-driven and we're excited to, to hear from the students. Ah, it really likes this slide. There we go. And to just share a bit on the tool that they actually use to collect the data. They used a simple mobile app seen in these screenshots that allows folks to capture the positive and negative aspects of their environment. And so as they'll tell you, they did a walk around Tobias with us, with their teachers and with facilitators and they captured the things that were working well, because there's always some good things, and the things that weren't working as well and shared a little bit about their thoughts. And we can see these on a map, which they'll be sharing with you. And it's an app that we've used across the age group and this is a group of young people who, who've used it with really bright minds.
Hi, my name is James and on March thirteenth, twenty twenty five, seventeen students walked a two block radius around our school, Marjorie H. Tobias, to collect information for our walk audit. We collected one hundred eleven photos, forty nine audio comments, and sixty five text comments.
So in the first picture here, we took this photo because there's not too many crosswalks. There's also lots of cars that come in and the paint for the crosswalks is also not very visible, which isn't good.
And in this next photo, there's a crosswalk, which is also good, but there's no stop sign, which is also bad because then cars can't stop, which can potentially get people hurt.
And in this picture, you can see that there are no crosswalks, so pedestrians are most likely going to J-walk.
And in this last picture, we can see that it's not fully painted, so it could be like a hazard, a dangerous hazard for elders or the people who are older than us. And there's not much sign to like indicate where people could go to their places.
Here are some of our recommendations to improve crosswalks. Number one, during daytime, we need durable paint so that the, to paint the crosswalks so that it won't scratch off easily. During night, we need something that is related to glow-in-the-dark paint so pedestrians can still walk across the road.
Some other ideas are that we can have more crosswalks and lights placed where intersections are so that the elder people can get across easier. Some other ideas are more signs and lights on the side of the road to warn drivers there is more, there are crosswalks where people walk across to get to their places.
And also, we can install flashing beacons for when it's dark for pedestrians and drivers. Also, we can have a curb ramp, which might be placed in the summer, so it's harder for people to walk further down into the crosswalk and potentially get hurt.
It's all right.
We can also have smooth roads and crosswalks for people and cars. We also need more highlighting and more curbs to make it easier for the elderly and other people while walking.
Today, we'll be talking about the topic of benches, benches, and why we should add more benches.
My name is Natalie and in this photo, it shows how near the bus stop, there's no signs of benches, which is a bad thing because people don't have a resting spot.
My name's Karina and in our photo, we took this photo because, because this is a safe resting spot for elderly and people in general.
Uh, my name is Eleanor Tria and on our walk, we found that there were many things that could be improved, such including benches. There weren't enough benches. We only found one, which was a problem because benches are a necessary thing on sidewalks, especially around community areas.
So with this, there are many bus stops around our school campus and then I think, we all think it's very, it's necessary to add benches since there's a lot of exploiting private property happening.
Many adults, some people cannot drive and the bus can be an inconvenient place to stand along for long, stand around for long periods of time. And so, but benches would help prevent them from getting tired and such.
To fix these problems, the city can hire engineers to add more benches to our community so less people would have the inconvenience to stand while waiting for the bus. I have, I had an experience. I've seen many people not like standing on the cross, like sidewalk, but rather on other people's houses' property and we, we find that as a big problem.
I per, I personally have noticed people in my neighborhood, high school students, waiting for the bus but leaning on people's houses, sitting in their lawns, which is a ma, which is a major problem and is considered trespassing.
My name is Logan Salima. And I'm Jayden Toe. We are talking about litter and pollution. In the picture over there, you can see that there's a, uh, can in the grass area and it's littering, so it can be bad for you and the environment.
In the next photo, you can see that there's a bottle, which is bad because people can trip and fall and get injured.
Some ways we can fix this is adding more trash cans around the neighborhood. And if we don't, people will just throw trash on the ground or not throw it away. We also need flashy lights on the trash can that can activate at night or paint trash cans with glow-in-the-dark paint so people can see it visibly.
We also need to put more no smoking signs to prevent people from polluting the air by smoking. It'll also protect the people who smoke from the dangers of smoking.
We also need to put more charging stations to, to protect the air from high carbon dioxide released by ca, grass cars. Gas car. And make more electric cars.
Hi, my name is Ivana.
I'm Kami.
I'm Elise.
And I'm James. Our team is bike lanes.
In this photo here, there's no bike lane down the steep hill and the steep hill can make it hard to bike up or down with cars speeding really fast.
In that picture, there's a bike lane for people who want a bike and that is amazing, but the paint is very faded and that's not good for the bikers.
And in this photo, it's bad for our community. It's bad for our community.
In this picture, it says that the bike lane is ending, which is good because it warns the biker, but it's also bad because the lane is ending.
There are steep, this, this is our recommendations. There's a good amount of bikers in Daly City, but around M H T., there are fewer bikers because of the steep hills, hazards, uneven pavement, and almost no bike lane. The Daly, the city of Daly City should add more bike lanes throughout Southgate Avenue and throughout Southgate Avenue neighborhoods.
The bike lane stops around the library and starts around the crosswalk near M H T. Many bikers like to bike on non-busy streets or neighborhoods, but on those non-busy streets or neighborhoods, there usually aren't any bike lanes. The, so the bikers have to bike on the street or on the sidewalk, but when cars come, the bikers have to move out of the way. The sidewalks are also very narrow.
We need to add big and wide sidewalks, like I said. We should make, we should paint the bike lanes to make it more visible and the paint should be glow-in-the-dark.
In addition to that, instead of using a regular paint, we should use reflective or glow-in-the-dark paint. On our walk, I, I, we identified that bike lanes are too narrow for bikers to ride on. On many streets in our neighborhood, there are, there are no bike lanes, which can make it harder for bikers to ride. And to keep the bikers safe, we should put some sort of barrier in between the bike lanes and the streets, for example, plastic poles.
That concludes our presentation today. We'll now move on to Q and A. Thank you.
Thank you for that very, very insightful presentation. I'd like to open it up to my friends on the dais here, colleagues. Questions, comments, feedback?
As I began this, I'll just throw it out. Thank you, Mayor. What an amazing, what did I tell you guys, right? Right? What an amazing presentation. Well done. Thank you so much. I don't have a question. I just wanted to say, how was it for you? Was it okay?
Although it was very nerve-wracking, we, I think we all enjoyed the process of making these slides and to present especially to the City Council and we appreciate that you heard our voices for the community.
Councilmember D. Giovanni?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I see our county representative there, so I wanna say that this is the heart of the community. We all know it and it's been my pleasure to be the representative for, the, when I was on the J E S D Oversight Board, not the school board, but the Oversight Board. And when this opportunity came along, I've been doing this for Safe Routes to School and being the representative for our council for numerous years. And then to say that we finally got to Tobias, I know we went to other schools, but I was like, yes, we're going to Tobias, right? And we have beloved principal, beloved parents, students, and to use and see what you think, right? Because you're the ones that use it, believe it, and even my friend who's not here tonight, Vinnie Esbe, Esbebeado, his granddaughter, as you all know, goes to that school. So to involve the community and the great ideas, our Public Works is listening, the county's listening and to implement your ideas and that it, it is just such an humble honor every time we do the walk audits and to be your representative of not this council, because I didn't, it didn't even become a part of this council, so you know. It, it just ca, became a part of it that when I looked on the list. But I'm proud to be your representative. I'm not gonna miss another one, never will, and happy you're all here tonight. You're, you're what keeps our city bright, beautiful, and it must be done for your safety and your thinking of other people's safety. I like that as well as for seniors and we're connected to Broadmore so we can give them a little push as well to integrate around that corner, as we all know, because it's all about you, your fu, for your future, your safety, and to make this a better world for the environment, your health, and every, and just enjoyment. And to that, I mean, you know, we love that principle, right? So, I know, but thank you for being here and again, you're the heart of the community. Humbled and honored to be your representative and thank you very much. You guys, awesome, great presentation.
Councilmember Manalo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, you all have done a tremendous job this evening, such a highlight. You know, when they say that the youth is our future, actually, you are our leaders of today. Don't we all agree? All of you are well-spoken and really did the work to research around your area and, and speak up about it. Not only were you researchers, you are advocates for your community, those that are around you and this is what community is. Yeah, and I just wanna say, you know, I, I went to the Jefferson Elementary School District. It's a school across the way, but so proud to see each and every one of you coming from J E S D. Our future is extremely bright because of you and wanting to keep the community safe. And with all of the recommendations that you all had, a lot of them stuck out to me and I think it's so innovative to see a lot of, like, why didn't we think about glow paint before? And, and I mean, that in itself, that's your innovation, your creativity, and sometimes as adults, you know, we don't even see through that lens. And if you really think about it, there's some things that are simple where, you know, it's easier to see in the dark or whatnot, but to also see the compassion that comes from you, wanting to make sure that there is a chair for the elderly, of making sure that, you know, even the youth that wait for our buses have a place to sit so they're not on other properties. I mean, this is all well thought out and you all did a tremendous job researching, looking at ways to solve for the problem and then presenting today in front of us. We're, we know, we're the body of policymakers. I mean, all the way around, I wanna say thank you to Councilmember Teresa Proaño, who said, hey, you all should present to all of us and so grateful that, you know, and humbled to hear your presentation today. Our future is definitely bright and you are our leaders today, so huge congratulations. We look forward to the implementation. As we said, we have city departments here listening. You have our ears as policymakers. We're looking to, forward to see all of those changes in the future and that started with all of you.
Vice Mayor Glenn Sylvester?
I'd like to point out that we're, as fifth graders, we won't be able to go to Marjorie H. Tobias anymore and other schools as well face these same challenges. So Jay, all of the school districts in the area have these same challenges and those schools should be addressed as well. That is, I mean, isn't that right? They are our leaders, leaders today, not only advocating for their school, but the, all the schools in J S D.
To add on to Eleanor's statement, I think that we're looking forward to these new implements. Although we're not in Marjorie H. Tobias anymore, we'd like to see more improvement in the community and we're thankful for everything you've done for us currently and before, of course.
Vice Mayor Glenn Sylvester?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Leilani, you have access to the computer there, do you? Can you do a search on Google for three D. crosswalks? Oh, she's putting, and while I make my comments. Apparently, I, I've been wanting something like this to be done a long time ago and you folks have definitely really pushed the envelope for me. When I heard glow paint, I thought about these three D. crosswalks and you can take a picture. I mean, you can see on the screen, if someone's driving in the car, when they come up across that, they think that they're going up over a bump and that may slow them down. There are different renditions. I would like to see something done like that, but thank you, Leilani, for bringing that up. So the comments I have thus far, I did not know this was coming tonight and I really appreciate all of you for being here. Eleanor, thank you for your statement because you were one step ahead of me in stating that it's not just this area, but all the other areas within Daly City. That and, and, and you're, uh-huh? Amara? That is a sign of true leadership to think about other people as well. And, you know, I, I, I'm just so ecstatic because I even put a note here, other schools. And so, and, and, and you just called it right out. And, but I have other schools here because I think other schools need to get involved as such and participate and coming before council because all too often, to the parents and the principal, all too often on this council, when we're looking at a project, we get consultants who come in. But I've always been of the opinion, I don't, I don't care how much expertise you have, do you live here? They live here. You folks live here and that is who we should be listening to. So I want you all to remember that you've only validated and verified the importance of why we need to listen to you folks. I would say a job well done and if you look at each other, every one of you brings something to the table. Every single one of you. So I enjoy that, you respect each other and congratulations to a job well done. This was very, very informative and in a few years from now, if you do see some of those crosswalks. And in a few years from now, if you do see some of those crosswalks, you were the instigator to get it done. Thank you so much.
I just want to say one thing. I know that the county representative is here tonight. She's the head of our Safe Routes to School. And I just want to let the council know, as well as our vice mayor, this has been going on, and that we actually have a walk audit professional that comes out with us. He comes out... I think he's from the East Coast, I believe. Let her explain, yeah. And that we have a group, all coordinated, the health, county health. And we've been doing this for a number of years. So if you don't mind, may she speak for a couple of minutes to explain.
Hi, I'm Teresa Vias-Kelly. I'm the Safe Routes to School Coordinator for the County Office of Education. And we've been working with the students in Stanford University on this project, because what they did informed the walk audit that we did at Tobias. So all the data they collected, they met with the walk audit facilitator. He reviewed their presentation with them, gave them some suggestions. He got all of their data ahead of time. So before he even came out to do the walk audit, he already had data that the students had collected. And I think, Vice Mayor, you're exactly right. They have the lived experience of walking to school. And so I think they're the experts. Like, I don't live in the neighborhood. I don't walk to Tobias. They do. They walk or drive or however they get to Tobias. They know all of the issues around the school. So it's been great sharing this experience with them.
So parents, family, community, folks, let's give them another round of applause. Probably beaming with so much pride and so much love. I had the fortune of... April, May are usually academic conference months. And I just came back from a couple of conferences. And it was just amazing to see young folks present and present their work. I just came back from a conference, actually from Boston, and had young people talk about their research projects as well. They call it Youth Participatory Action Research, or YPAR, which my nonprofit did, and seeing other people do it across the nation, and seeing what this process has done for many young people. I just want to let y'all know, what y'all did is graduate-level work. Okay? Let that sink in, right? Like, as fifth graders, y'all did graduate-level work. Like, honestly, as a professor and as a person that has been published in years past, I didn't know a lot of these things until I became a graduate student myself. Learning theoretical frameworks, understanding what citizen science frameworks or lenses are. You know, a lot of these things are probably not even taught when you even get to college as an undergrad. It's probably not even taught until you get into maybe upper division, or even if you have the privilege of even getting to that, to have classes that teach you this. So you should be proud of yourselves for learning these necessary skills that, again, what Vice Mayor was alluding, we hire consultants for thousands of dollars. And y'all did this amazing work that a consultant would provide for us. When we talk about... I put that 3D painting thing down as well. It was... I was like... And so one thing that I really wanted to point out was, like, we live every day without questioning or just simply inheriting our lived conditions without questioning or imagining new ways. We just take it as it is, because we've seen things so many times. But it takes fresh eyes, right? And in the history of our world, like, innovative changes have always came from young people, right? So please take that to heart. You know, when we talk about changes and evolution and social transformations and evolutions of thinking, it's always come from young people, right? Everything from environmental stuff to social movements has happened throughout our country and throughout other nations. So this leads... And you asked me what kind of question. So I'm going to give you all a question that I always ask a lot of my young folks. And so what has this process taught you about being a leader? Go ahead.
Something this project has taught us is to, like, speak up and be confident rather than hiding in the shadows. Most of us, or some of us, don't really speak up. And this opportunity really helped you guys hear our voice and about the community. And really, really looking forward to seeing the changes very soon.
Anybody else? Going once, going twice. So I see parents scared, like, go, go! No? Don't be shy. So I did this... So my son did a very similar project last year. And he actually presented in front of a national conference. And I did like the Tiger Dad, like, push, like, come on, speak. Okay. Well, I think when we talk about research, it's more than just the research for the sake of research. And, you know, when we do, when we hear information like this, it actually comes upon our own, within our own periphery or within our own, like, our table, to see what we can do as a leadership and as a council. And I just want to say, thank you for sharing your information. And don't let this presentation be the end-all, be-all. You know, I hope this is the process for you to take part in more civic-engaged projects as you get older. And then in no time, one of y'all are going to be sitting in one of our seats. I'll leave it up to you. And I'm going to hand it over back to Teresa. So I also want to thank Councilmember Proaño for bringing this to us, to council.
Yes. So the last thing I would like to say is, again, thank you. But not just thank you, but thank you to the parents and to the siblings that are here when you support your children and being present for them. And it makes all the difference. And I can see... Makes me emotional. Look at all the smiley faces out there. Look, turn around, look at your parents. Look at... Yeah, they are amazing. But I'd like to thank the parents. I'd like to thank each and every one of you. I hope you won't be strangers and that we'll see you again here. Did we have the principal speaker? Do we want him to come up? Oh, come on!
Now it's my turn to be nervous? Okay. My name is Brian Bethel. I'm the principal of Marjorie H. Tobias this year. I'm new to the school. I did have the chance to do a walk audit with a couple of folks here at TRP a couple of years ago. So I was familiar with the process. And when the opportunity presented itself, I jumped on it. So I'm really proud of this class, not only from what I saw, but from what our facilitators saw. They've actually, on their own accord, agreed to come back and start working with our students to implement some projects that they can do in the real future right now, before they head out of the door from Marjorie Tobias. So thank you for letting us be here. I'm, again, super proud of our kiddos. You guys did a great job. And you're so well-spoken.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Good job. Thank you for letting us be here. I forgot to thank the teachers who let us steal their class time to do these projects too. So thank you.
So with that, we also have certificates signed by myself, the mayor, and my colleagues on city council. We have some certificates for you all for conducting this research project.
And then we can take a photo, if that's okay?
Yeah. Yeah. So we... First off, we have Eleanor Ituria. We also have Kami Kailau. We have Sophie Montemayor. Elise Lau. Amara Ung. We also have Chase Norman. Congratulations. Jaden Tu. Karina Tang. We have Farin Leong. Congratulations. Ronald Conklin. Oh, he's not here. Okay, we'll just give this to your teacher. Jacob Sito. Logan Salina. Oh, Salima. All right. Good job, Logan. Natalie Nguyen. Alexander DeLeon. Congratulations. Jaden Ramil. James Delancy. And last but not least, we have Ivana Chan. So this is our time to take pictures. Let's have them come up here, so we could have a picture with our council as well.
Guys, gentlemen, we'll stand behind you.
How are we doing this?
And the principal?
Can we have the teachers as well join us? And the facilitators?
Where's my county friend? Where's my... Where's my county friend? Get up here.
We're actually going to move everybody up.
How about we're going to move them back there in our chairs?
Wow! What do you think, parents? Why are you the mayor? What do you think?
I'm the mayor, guys!
Looks good!
How about us? We're on top of the flag.
I am now the mayor.
And the principal!
I already did get to sit.
I'm the mayor, guys! I'm the mayor now!
Does Miss Lowe?
Does it work?
Does it work?
They got a good election, Dr. Kim.
How's it feel back there?
It feels good.
Totally.
I'm now the mayor.
I'm the vice mayor.
Never know! You never know! Could be your seat.
Can we run as mayor for five seconds?
Never know!
Take a picture, take a picture, take a picture!
Yo, wait! Yo!
Congratulations!
Wow. That was... Thank you for bringing that upon us, Teresa. I feel like that was unprecedented. I don't think we ever had something like that at our council meeting. Well, in my experience. Okay. So let's go ahead and move on to item number two. We have a proclamation for Phyllis Rizzi, Chair of the Daly City Age Friendly Task Force. Okay. So while you're making your way up, I'm going to read this off, this proclamation. Whereas Phyllis Rizzi has dedicated decades of selfless service, compassionate leadership, and in community engagement, both in San Francisco and since 1991 in the city of Daly City. And whereas Phyllis and her husband relocated from Boston to San Francisco in 1973, where she first began her journey of community involvement by assisting at the local library and supporting senior neighbors, embodying the value of kindness, care, and connection she inherited from her civic-minded parents. And whereas, after moving to Daly City in 1991, Phyllis continued her commitment to civic life despite her full-time employment. And upon retirement, she redoubled her efforts tirelessly, dedicating herself to causes that uplift the lives of others across the entire city. And whereas her leadership and volunteerism with organizations such as the North Peninsula Food Pantry and Dining Center and the Second Harvest Food Bank in the Basher Community reflect her enduring commitment to addressing food insecurity, promoting social equity, and improving the well-being of Daly City's older adult residents. And whereas, Phyllis Rizzi has served with this distinction as a member of the Daly City Age Friendly Task Force, bringing her wisdom, empathy, and leadership to the forefront in shaping the Daly City Age Friendly Action Plan that has implemented forward-thinking initiatives that foster intergenerational connection, accessibility, and healthy aging. And whereas, Phyllis Rizzi exemplifies the spirit of public service and through her decades of kindness, generosity, and action, she has made a profound and lasting impact on lives of countless residents. Now therefore, I, Dr. Rod Dos Magual, mayor, and the members of the city council of the city of Daly City do hereby proclaim April 28, 2025, as Phyllis Rizzi Day in Daly City and thank her for her exceptional leadership, unwavering service, and heartfelt dedication to our community. The city council extends deepest admiration and gratitude for her legacy of service and lifetime of advocacy and declares her an enduring champion of community equity and age-friendly advancement. Signed and sealed by the mayor and city council of the city of Daly City this 28th day of April 2025.
Thank you very, very much. That was quite an act to follow, wasn't it? But I see the youth growing. They will carry on our mission that we've just started. And so it's very heartening. I am so humbled, and I thank you all very much. It's done because I love... I love everybody. I like people. I like working with people. I like... I find a lot of joy in my life just getting to know people and being part of a community. And this community has been really important to me my whole time here, over 30 years. And I'm so glad I moved to Daly City. Just, I found a great home here. And I want to give back. So I truly appreciate everything. And there are many, many other people also who deserve your appreciation as well. Thank you. And there are many, many other people also who deserve your appreciation as well. Thank you.
I guess, Phyllis, before we, before you sit down, is there a way we could maybe take a picture with Phyllis?
Yes.
Take all of us?
Yes.
Yeah.
You mean I don't have to come up there?
If you'd like to.
No, thank you.
Mayor, I don't know, mayor.
I wouldn't take your seat away. Thank you. Thank you so much.
So well deserved. Well deserved.
I miss Phyllis.
I appreciate everything you, thank you. Alright. I gave you a hug from over there. A street, huh?
Better be well paid. Oh.
The Vice President, the Vice President.
We good? Okay. Alright. So my council, don't, uh, don't get too comfortable. We're gonna have a couple more pictures here, so. Okay. Alright. Item number three, the proclamation, 2025 AAPI Fest. Uh, it's a proclamation for, um, Over the Fog. So maybe we can have you, you want me to do the proclamation first and then present? Or do you want to do the presentation first? Okay. Alright, thanks, Melody. So.
And your seat.
Okay, so we have another proclamation here for the 2025 AAPI Fest. So whereas, the Over the Fog, established in 2010, is a visionary community-centered platform that celebrates and uplifts the voices, art, culture, and stories of Filipino-Americans and the broader BIPOC communities, particularly those rooted in Daly City and the Greater Bay Area. And whereas, Over the Fog fosters a deep sense of belonging, pride, and solidarity among community members by amplifying underrepresented narratives and promoting social awareness through understanding and appreciation. And whereas, in 2012, Over the Fog curated its first Asian-American cultural festival, embodying the values of unity, empowerment, and cultural celebration that reflect the spirit of Daly City and its rich diversity. And whereas, the festival serves as a cultural bridge, spotlighting local artists, musicians, storytellers, entrepreneurs, and grassroots organizers, whose contributions strengthen the cultural fabric of our city. And whereas, the Asian-American Cultural Festival, renamed the AAPI Fest, is a vibrant gathering that honors intergenerational creativity, storytelling, and advocacy, creating a safe and joyful space where culture and community thrive. And whereas, the 2025 AAPI Fest will be held on Saturday, May 3, 2025, from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. at the Classic Bowl Center on 900 King Drive, Daly City, and the community is invited to come and celebrate Asian-American Pacific Under Heritage Month, Mother's Day, and graduation season. Now therefore, I, Dr. Roderick Dos Magbual, and members of the City Council of Daly City, do hereby proclaim May 3, 2025, as Over the Fog Day, to recognize their extraordinary contributions to the civic and cultural life of our city, and extend our deepest appreciation for creating meaningful spaces where community creativity and heritage are celebrated and honored. Signed and sealed by the Mayor and City Council of the City of Daly City this 28th day of April 2025.
Thank you so much. Once again, my name's Melody Galu, Melody Ibona Galu. And I've been in Daly City for all 41 years of my life, and this is such an honor and a privilege, especially to stand before you. Actually, I have such a long history here in Daly City. I always tell people, "Born, raised, live, die." I'm Daly City native, forever resident, and even Jesslyn, actually, she'll tell you that we actually grew up together going to Pizza and Pipes at Ceramani Center long ago.
Yes, she is a childhood.
Yeah, childhood friends, family. And that's what Daly City is all about in the AAPI community, is, you know, just having these strong bonds of community, not just within ourselves, but with everybody who's around us. They're everybody's family. So I just wanna, you know, thank God just for this opportunity to represent our community, but also Daly City as the larger community. Classic Bowling Center, you know, is providing us this wonderful opportunity for free. They're providing free bowling, and, you know, they've always been a community hub. I actually literally grew up inside Classic Bowling Center because they used to have a nursery. So I was actually a part of the nursery with Matt DiVincenzi, who's the son of the owner. And, you know, it's just so wonderful. We used to also have the festival inside Ceramani Shopping Center. So, you know, this is all about highlighting not just AAPI, but Daly City also. And I always wanted to show people that we're not just a gateway to somewhere else. We're a destination. We have a wonderful, strong community, and it's, you know, thanks to people like you. So thank you so much for all of this.
Let's take a quick picture, Melody. Should we go down there?
Hang out there.
We're doing some squats today.
So you knew Clayton, right? Clayton Goodey. He was writing today about AAPI. And he was talking about the umbrella, how large the umbrella is. Reach out to him. It was a beautiful poem. Clayton just wrote a poem today.
Oh, really? Yeah, no.
We're going to the proper cinema. But yeah, reach out to him. It was beautiful. How beautiful it is. He's asking my opinion. Congratulations.
Alright. Moving on to item number four, proclamation for Arab American Heritage Month. Uh, will be presented to Amro Rodwan, Chair of the Daly City Small Business Commission. And before you head up, I'm gonna just read this proclamation real quick, Amro. So proclamation, National Arab American Heritage Month. Whereas, Arab American Heritage Month provides an opportunity to recognize and celebrate the achievements, contributions, and resilience of Arab Americans while also promoting understanding, respect, and appreciation for the heritage, culture, and the diversity they bring to our nation. And whereas, over a century, Arab Americans have made significant and valuable contributions to society across fields, including science, medicine, technology, business, arts, literature, and social justice, enriching the cultural and intellectual fabric of our nation. And whereas, since migrating to America, people of Arab descent have shared their rich culture, traditions, and knowledge with neighbors and communities while also exemplifying the qualities of model citizens, public servants, and advocates for social progress. And whereas, Arab Americans have brought with them to America their resilient family values, a strong work ethic, a commitment to education, and deep respect for diversity and faith and creed, and which all contributed to the strength and vitality of our democracy. And whereas, on April 5, 2025, the City of Daly City celebrated the inaugural Arab American Heritage Month celebration, an important event that highlights the contributions of culture of Arab Americans while fostering a greater understanding of their role in shaping the nation's history and future. And whereas, during this month, we honor the diverse tapestry of Arab American communities, their history, culture, and ongoing contributions to our nations, and reaffirm our commitment to fostering a more inclusive, equitable, and united society for all. Now therefore, I, Dr. Roderick Dos Magbual, Mayor, and the members of the City Council of the City of Daly City do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Arab American Heritage Month, recognizing the invaluable contributions of Arab Americans to our society, amplifying their voices, celebrating their cultural heritage, and promoting understanding, respect, and inclusivity in our community. Signed and sealed by the Mayor and the City Council of the City of Daly City this 28th day of April 2025. So Amro, you wanna go ahead and say a few words?
Good evening, Mayor Dr. Dos Magbual. Thank you, members of the City Council and fellow community members. I'm honored to stand before you this evening to accept this proclamation recognizing Arab American Heritage Month. On behalf of Arab Americans here in Daly City and beyond, I thank you for acknowledging our rich culture and history. Arab Americans have been a vibrant part of the nation's tapestry, contributing, like, like you said, in, in fields from education, healthcare, business, technology, and, and the arts. We take pride in our shared values, our devotion to family. It's almost their bedtime. Education and community service. We, we also celebrate, you know, the incredible diversity within the Arab American community itself, a diversity of cultures, language, religions, and of course, food. And, and when we gather to honor Arab American Heritage Month, we also renew our collective commitment to inclusivity and mutual respect. Recognition from you all, our civic leaders, such as this proclamation reaffirms Daly City stands for welcoming communities, bridging cultural divides and fostering understanding among all neighbors. Yet, while we celebrate here, we must, we must also acknowledge the challenges faced by many of the broader Arab world. Tonight, I want to share the concern we all hold in our hearts for the people of Gaza and Yemen, those enduring conflict, starvation, and instability. It's easy, it's a, it's a painful reality that these conflicts impact ordinary families, communities, and children that long for peace. As part of the global family, we cannot overlook their suffering. We must continue to advocate for humanitarian relief and a path to a lasting resolution. Here in Daly City, we have the opportunity to unite our voices, not only in celebration of heritage and cultural contributions, but also in empathy and support for these, for those in need. I hope everyone understands that some of the families here in Daly City have families back home and are directly affected by what's happening, specifically the genocide in our time. I encourage everyone to stand in solidarity with these people from all backgrounds, to learn about Arab Americans' traditions, and to use our shared platform to advocate for peace and basic human rights. Again, I'd like to thank you all, and my deep gratitude for the City Council for this proclamation.
Sorry. Sorry to the council, I'm making y'all work out today, but I would love.
I ain't leaving without a photo.
I mean, it's, it's good for our health, y'all.
Alright, Commissioner. Congratulations, Commissioner. You're the best for me, recognize. And to the family.
So we meet again.
I hope they wake up first.
Thank you so much. We're so proud of you.
See, we're getting blood flowing. I mean, you know, we've had council meetings where we sat here for hours. Okay, so checking along over here, we have item number five, another proclamation for Wildfire Preparedness Month, May 2, 2025, North County Fire Authority. So before we have our chief come up, let me just go ahead and do this proclamation. So proclamation, Wildfire Preparedness Month, May 2, 2025. Whereas, in California, over 2 million homes are at risk of wildfire. And whereas, last year, 8,024 wildfires burned 1,050,012 acres across the state. And whereas, 90% of all wildfires are human-caused, human acts of carelessness result in wildfire disasters every year. And whereas, each year, more people move into wild- burn urban interface areas, increasing the need to raise awareness among our citizens and how they can protect their property from wildfire losses. And whereas, Genesis Protect, formerly known as Zone Haven, has been adopted as a county-wide tool to assist with informed evacuation during wildfire. And we encourage residents to know your zone before an emergency arises. And whereas, the North County Fire Authority encourages fire-safe behavior by all who live, work, and recreate throughout the city of Daly City. And whereas, each of us can do our part to prepare for wildfire emergencies by taking steps to make effective changes to our homes and landscapes to reduce the risk of wildfire. Now therefore, I, Dr. Rod Dos Magbual, Mayor, and the members of the City Council of Daly City now proclaim May 2, 2025 as Wildfire Preparedness Month, and encourage all Daly City residents to increase their knowledge and awareness of proper safety measures to protect themselves from the devastating effects of wildfires. Signed and sealed by the Mayor and City Councils, City Council of the City of Daly City this 28th day of October 2, 2025.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. On behalf of North County Fire Authority, we accept the proclamation. And moving forward, we are gonna be, I just wanna put out there, on May 20, we'll be at Arden Park discussing wildfire awareness to the community from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on that date. So we'll be talking to the community about wildfire awareness, and also talking about fire safety precautions and prevention in their homes and, and the community as well. I think one thing has always resonated with me was a, a quote, and ever since when I started in the fire service, that this quote always sat with me. And the quote goes, "For an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure." So, thank you very much, and have a good evening.
You might as well take one more last picture. Before we go, Vice Mayor.
I just wanna say thank you so much. Thank you for your service. And when I saw you back there, I thought you were police, 'cause I'm looking, that's a captain I haven't met. But no, it was fire. Congratulations, sir, very much.
I also wanted to say thank you for your service and doing Arden Park outreach. I know that that's where, you know, it's closer to Southern Hills in that area. And I remember even last year, having my children go there, and there were residents that came down and really appreciated the education. And you just said with that quote, educating those few, you know, is really gonna help prevent wildfires out there. So thank you for that work and continuous work.
Thank you.
Alright, let's do one more last picture.
And Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief. But why?
Everyone's very purple. Thank you.
She's good. Chief, thank you. Thank you.
I know you guys like going around to give your education. I've heard about that so.
Alright. I think, I hope everybody has their blood flowing. Probably the most physical council meeting I've ever been to. Okay, item number six, can I get a motion for the approval of minutes for the regular meeting of April 14, 2025?
Motion to approve minutes?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Moving down to item number seven, approval of agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda for the regular meeting? Oh, my bad, I did the minutes.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's switch that. So I'll, I'll do number six. So can I get a motion for approval of, did I say minutes?
Oh, you did do minutes.
Okay, my bad. Approval from the agenda.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next up, we have oral comments. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, we'll go over to consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're gonna have one more picture today.
Maybe they, maybe everybody here.
Yeah, we're gonna get everybody in the meeting. We're gonna take one big picture at the end of the meeting.
Mayor's request. We'll do it for you, Mayor.
Okay, so we get down to item number 15, propose increases and updates to the Daly City Master Fee Schedule. And we have Amanda Halber. Come on down, Amanda. And we have Amanda Halber. Come on down, Amanda.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Tonight, for your consideration, as the updates to the proposed master fee schedule for fiscal 2026. A little bit of background on the master fee schedule. In 2022, council reviewed and adopted the updated user fees and master fee schedule. At that time, staff recommended that the master fee schedule be brought to council annually to review fees and any recommendation or any recommended adjustments consistent with the negotiated cost of living adjustments, or COLA. Last year, City Council approved a fee increase of 4% for the majority of fees based on the fiscal 2025 negotiated COLA. This year, staff is recommending a nominal 2% increase across most fees since negotiations are currently ongoing and there is no current COLA information available for fiscal 2026. So the fee changes consist of, for most general fees, it is recommended to increase by the 2%. Fees not impacted by this include deposits and those that are regulated by outside agencies and legislation. And most fees were rounded down to the nearest round dollar. Adjustments were made to the fee schedule numbering to account for new fees and any fees that were being removed. And the fee schedule was published online at the city's website, starting April 14th, for review for the public. One update we do have to the proposed master fee schedule is for the passport fees. Originally, the passport fees were planned to be removed from the fiscal year 2026 master fee schedule since the service had not been offered in a few years. The city recently reapplied to the passport acceptance facility to be a passport acceptance facility again and was notified last week that our application has progressed to the next step in the reinstatement process. So now staff is planning to bring that service back to Daly City. This fee is being requested to be added back to the master fee schedule and be set at $35, which is the fee set by the U.S. Department of State.
Oh, great.
The miscellaneous fees adjustments outside of the 2% include the removal of materials recovery fee and processing fee for lost or damaged items, which was sometimes refunded depending on circumstances. The external copier fee is being replaced by the printing, a printing to copier fee for black and white and color copies due to upgraded machines. And recreation has updated multiple fees to better align with comparable programs, reflect hourly wage increases, reflect increases in supply costs, and for new programs and events. The exact details of each recreation fee being updated can be found in attachment C in the staff report. Fire has also requested a change in the new occupancy business inspections and annual fire inspections. This fee was evaluated by finance and fire based on City Council's request for a tiered system. It is being recommended that each fee have four tiers based on the square footage of the business. These fees represent the increase in level of service or the time it takes to inspect the businesses in tiers two, three, and four. The new tiers would be tier one for any business under 10,000 square feet, tier two for businesses between 10,000 and 20,000 square feet, tier three for businesses between 20,000 and 1 to 45,000 square feet, and tier four for businesses larger than 45,000 square feet. There's an estimated 31 businesses that currently would be affected by this new tier structure. As for the fee, it is recommended that the tier one rate not be increased for fiscal 2026 schedule and all tiers be held steady for an additional two fiscal years to provide businesses with a pause from increases and adjust to the new tiered structure. This also allows the city staff to continue to further evaluate the tier structure, which will be more of a focus in the next user fee study, which is scheduled to be done in the next budget cycle. And city staff is available to provide any additional information desired by Mayor or City Council members.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, I'll go ahead and open it up. I see three, or council, then we'll go, council member.
Thank you very much for this report. It happened that I walked into a local business, I think just last week, and the owner was complaining because his office was this big. And he said it probably took two minutes for the fire.
Extinguisher.
Thank you. Extinguishers, thank you. You know, to be checked, the two that were there, and the office was small. And he was complaining at the 453. Boy, when he finds out, he's lucky he's not in the other tiers. But when we have that fee, the $453, I'm guessing we factor in the cost for the employee, the fireperson, to come. And there's not just looking, there's paperwork, right? I didn't want to, I mean, I'm glad you're here so that I can respond the next time I go in. I can say, well, you know, that fee that you're paying is for multiple things. It's not just to walk in the door and look at two fire extinguishers and say, you know, you're fine. Can I just have a little background so I know what to say?
Yeah, so it does include admin and the cost of going out there and going to the fees. There is also office assistant time that goes into it to be processing all of the fees and sending it out to the accounts receivables. Accounts receivables has to have spending the time to evaluating the account, making sure that we haven't charged them yet and things like that, and sending it out. So there is additional staff time that goes into the backend overhead of it instead of just the firefighter that you see or the inspector going out to the business. There's more that go into it now.
I appreciate that. So I'll be using that information the next time I see that business owner. Because, and I think that you're absolutely right. I mean, where I work at Duggan's, it's a large building and it takes a while for them to walk through that building. And so seeing that we were just charging the same amount of money for a small one and a large one, I can see where this is very beneficial because it takes them a long time, you know? So anyway, thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Councilmember De Giovanni.
So first of all, I'd like to thank staff for working on this and especially our city manager. What I given the feedback on the city manager when we did the first budget session was that the small businesses were looking to reduce, according to the ones that we know, to actually reduce the first fee. And I believe that staff was giving some of the suggestions from the small business that I relayed to the city manager to finance. One of the suggestions, so my council knows, is that when some of the feedback was, and it answers your question, council member, is that where it says for tier one, they suggested 1,000 to 5,000 feet because 10,000 feet would not be considered a small business. It would be considered probably like Walgreens. Now, this is all feedback from small businesses that I spoke with. So the suggestions were given to the city manager who relayed them to the staff. And because they wanted to, as you said, reduce their fee and not to put it on the back of the corporations, but as they move up, perhaps charge them a little more so that the Home Depot and the larger businesses would be maybe not absorbing a large amount, but it would take some of the burden off of the small businesses rather than keeping it the same. They need to have this number, which I'm sure the people that you spoke with was concerned, to have that number reduced. So they were saying that a small business to consider would be 1,000 to 5,000 feet rather than 10,000 because 10,000 is a larger business, such as Walgreens. And then for tier two, so from 5,000 to 10,000, and then so forth. But the main thing was to reduce the fee for the small businesses, which is the tier one. That's the feedback that I got from the small businesses.
May I just real quick, before you hit, I understand where you're coming from, but when I'm looking at this, you're not raising their fee, right? It's staying the same with costs.
But that's what they're struggling with, that our small businesses, with the current fee.
I get it. But what's happening is it could, everybody else is going up. So, and their fee's staying the same.
Yeah, but they could afford it because there are the Home Depots, the Walgreens. When you walk in, so this is how they explained it, the small business. They said you can walk in to a smaller business and then, like you said, there's a, like, it takes less time. And they're not saying they don't want to pay, but they're struggling anyway as a small business in Daly City. They're asking to have this fee not reduced a lot, but at least reduced. And then have, and have it from 1,000 to 5,000 because going from 5,000 to 10,000 is, we're talking 10,000 square feet, is Walgreens size. Which is not a small business.
Correct. But when you run a business, if you have one or two employees in a small business, you have a larger business where you have more employees, more costs, more overhead, more everything, everything costs as well. So you got to look at it on both ends.
Oh, yeah, I get it. But this is the feedback, and I believe that even our city manager, because he goes to our, I don't have to say, he goes to, he supports our small businesses. A lot of people know that. And when he's out on the small businesses, they have even told me that he knows, you know, he supports them. So when he, we brought that up at the budget, is there any way to reduce, I'm not saying free, reduce the small business, and I'm not saying like, but Home Depot and the 10,000 square feet is not a small business. So tier one, from 1,000 to 10,000, when they looked at this today, they contacted me. It was about 17 businesses, small businesses, that contacted me. And I relayed the information over to the city manager immediately so that he could look at the information. So.
I do have, I appreciate the question. Thank you very much for that. I did receive the information that you were talking about from today. This also, just as a note, we set time in place for a public hearing at a prior city council meeting. At that time, and for this public hearing, we also listed the entire fee schedule.
Right.
After the first budget study session, as Amanda mentioned, finance staff met with fire staff. After fire staff had already looked into the situation in terms of square footage, level of service, and staff time taken to inspect businesses, we met with fire staff. And fire recommended the four tiers that's in front of you this evening based on inspector feedback and level of service for larger businesses in the city. So that's why what is being shown this evening is that. It's that process from the first budget study session when the question was proposed. In terms of information that was provided from various small businesses that you relayed today, that information could not be put into an actual proposal for you this evening because we had to publish the fee list, the whole master fee schedule. But we are bringing it before you as a council to approve. As Amanda mentioned, in addition to the work that finance staff did with fire staff to look at this and create this current tiered structure, we discussed having that tier one fee be frozen for fiscal year 2026 and not increased, and also not increased for the next two years. So that there would be, one, a break in fee increases for those small businesses. And two, as Amanda mentioned, we're coming up on five years of the consultant starting the work on the master fee schedule and putting it together. It's recommended that jurisdictions look at those fees every five years or so. We plan on doing that in the next budget cycle. Included in the finance budget proposal is money for an update to the fee study. And we will be talking to our consultant to look at this fee specifically, but other fees as well.
Sure.
Is there a different way to look at these fees that they can come back to us and say, other cities use a different analysis instead of staff time taken to perform a service? So that is something that we will be looking at with the consultant when we redo the schedule. That's why we're proposing to set the tier structure and to let it be that and stay that way for the next couple fiscal years until we can then look at it with the consultant in more detail. But that's what we're bringing in front of you this evening.
Yeah, thank you for explaining that. And thank you to the city manager. Also, the other thing is that, because when we had our first budget session, is I was thinking that the Small Business Commission could have weighed in on it because they are actually small business owners. And maybe have them also reach out to, and, you know, get feedback from them. And to those they know.
Yeah, thank you for that idea.
So they can always, so this is set like this for now and it's frozen for that, but at the same time, it can be revisited?
Correct. This is the proposal as staff is bringing to this evening for the public hearing we're having at the moment. And staff is listening to feedback and also the council's feedback as to direction with regard to these fees and any other fees.
Okay. Thank you for that. And thank you to the city manager.
Vice Mayor Glenn Sevastur.
Ms. Halber, thank you so much. Listening to the concerns, can you go back to the slide indicating the different tiers? My first question is, how much did folks under 10,000 square feet pay last year?
$453.
How much did they pay the year before that?
Roughly 4% less.
4% less? That's about 12, that's about $11, so that would probably be 440 something. I think in this particular case, I agree with council member De Giovanni in the sense that I think we should have five tiers. Five tiers with the first one being, say, up to 5,000 square feet.
Yeah, that's what they were saying.
It's just an example. I'm just throwing this out there. I'm a firm believer, as Ms. Halber made mention, as to the staff time to input all this information for someone to go out. What I'm looking at is cost recovery. And I think we should begin at the 453, being that 453 was paid the last year. And things are going up, so we should not go lower than the 453 as a minimum for cost recovery for businesses up to 5,000 square feet. Then we can increase from 5,000 to 10,000. And basically, we have another tier. That's to accommodate some of these smaller businesses. Because 10,000 feet is big, is big. So someone, I think it's big. And I think there's some room to allow. It's just my thoughts. What I'd also like to see in this change, I understand there's a deferment maybe for one to two years that gives folks to understand what is coming. And I think that would help tremendously. I think what would also help us, because we're currently in the budget talks right now, I think you made mention, was it, is it 51 businesses? I heard a number, but I didn't quite.
31.
Okay, I know it was a one. Thank you, Ms. Halber. So 31 businesses, and I'm not going to ask, I'm going to ask the question, but I know you don't have the answer. Out of the 31, what is the breakdown in square footage for each one? Like, 4% is over 10,000, 2% is over 20,000. Basically, I'm trying.
I can tell you the number that are in each category. I don't have the percentage yet.
Oh, no, no, no. That's okay, because I'm just wondering, how much is this going to, if this goes through, bring into the coffers?
Yeah, so it's estimated that there's about seven that are greater than 45,000 in the highest tier. And then there is 11 in greater than 20,000, and then the rest would be in tier two.
Okay, so it's just a matter of calculations. So 11 times 906, whatever that amount is, and 7 times 1133. So, I mean, we can go on, but I'm glad you have those numbers. And if I were to do some homework and say, take all 31 and multiply it times 453, And if I were to do some homework and say, take all 31 and multiply it times 453, to which there was no change, then we would definitely see the difference. Okay, good to know. Thank you, Ms. Halber. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Just, just as a note, uh, as we've talked about the 31 businesses, if, if we were to change tier, tier one to be, um, up to 5,000 square feet and then create a tier two, which is 5,000 square feet to 10,000 square feet. So we would be adding, um, a large number of businesses into that 5 to 10,000 dollar square feet category, i- is all I'm bringing up. I'm not, I'm not saying something against the proposal. I'm saying that there are 31 businesses that are larger than 10,000 square feet in the city. So if, if we create five tiers and it's up to 5,000 square feet and then 5,001 square feet to 10,000 square feet, that second tier, um, which will be higher than 451, 453, I assume, will be, I would say, a fairly large number of businesses outside of the, the largest 31. If, if, um, you'd like to do that and tier five, let's say, was 1133 and stayed there, wasn't increased, like, you're not bumping up that number to a higher number, uh, then you could, you know.
No, 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 no.
Not adding.
All those numbers go up, with the exception of the first one stays at 453 up to 5,000.
453.
Increase every one of those other numbers, that's what I'm proposing.
Right.
Okay.
And, uh, I don't know, maybe the chief can explain. If you send someone up to a 5,000 square foot business, how many people does it take? I'm looking at cost recovery, that's all.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Kind of to be clear, um, we have about 2,000 that are in the tier one. That's where the majority of all of the inspections take place. We came up with the tiers because we normally use occupancy type. But the occupancy type goes anywhere from a small square footage. And in our particular case in this city, for all the years I've been here, it goes all the way up to the Home Depot.
Right.
So what we tried to do was come up with some tiers, but the majority of all the inspections are in tier one. That represents the vast majority. The other 31 was a way to, to create fairness in terms of looking at what it would take to do a much larger facility. So, so the, the gap in there, I, I think what I'm hearing is that the 453 is a high number. What you're suggesting is that we go higher. I think you're getting feedback that it should be lower at the 453 tier one number. I don't know what that number exactly would be. But, um, if we cut it, for example, in the tier one, the 2,000, we cut those in half, you would lose a half a million dollars in reimbursement, cost reimbursement. So looking at that number in tier one, we just need to, uh, understand that that's the vast majority of the inspections.
Mayor.
Well, Chief, the reason why I had to ask, because, uh, I had asked Mr. Nevin, how much did they pay last year as 453? How much did they pay the year before, which was approximately 440? I think moving forward, you're not going to get lower than 453. Th- this is my thinking, so I'm not looking for a lower price. How I'm, how I'm looking at is a starting off price, but with another tier, uh, uh, say up to 5,000. And I, you know, I'm going to say if I owned a business of 200 square feet, I'm going to be definitely upset that somebody with, uh, 10,000 square, 999, uh, square feet gets to pay the same as I do.
Mm-hmm.
I, I, I don't think there's some equity there.
And I would, I would just say that, uh, I don't know that we have much in tier two. So, but we can certainly make, look at that adjustment.
Equity, equity, you're right.
The, uh, Vice Mayor, if I may, the, the, the difference in the proposed column for each tier is approximately 226 to 227 dollars per tier. So with that thinking and the, and the, what you're saying, I'm thinking that tier one would be 453 up to 5,000.
Okay.
Tier two would be 680 from 5,000 to 10,000. Tier three, from 10,000 to 20,000 would be 906. And then tier four, from 20,000 to 45,000 would be 1133.
Anything above.
And then tier five, above 45,000 square feet would be 1360.
There you go.
Yep.
Okay. And, and that's, that's why, number one, I had to ask. So somebody with, say, 5,000 square feet, how many folks does it take to do that?
Well, part of the analysis that was done to create these fees has to do with the number of people involved. So we have a technical prevention person, a fire company, and all the others that get involved.
I get it, but I'm talking about the person who actually goes out there, like, somebody comes into this room and does an inspection. How many people will it take?
We have three as part of the fire company that go out and are a part of the inspection. And then for the more technical that aren't even part of this permitted, it's, it's one to two inspectors that go out to deal with something that's more permitted.
So what I'm getting at is to show the businesses in Daly City, especially in compensating 20,000 square foot or more, it won't, excuse me, it won't take two people to go out. It'll take three, so that you can decrease the amount of time to do it. But you're also showing the business, well, what, this is what you're paying for. Because if you send one person out that, at 20,000, oh, wait a minute. You're doing this for 20,000, are you the same one who does it for under 10,000? And we're paying much more? I'm, I'm looking at the optics.
Yeah, and it's not completely apples to apples, but we are still lower than any other city, pretty much on the peninsula.
Now, that I don't have. Because if I had that chart, you would know where I would stand. Because I've been, uh, we need to change this master fee schedule and we need to have a comparison as to where everybody else is at. And it's my understanding that we haven't raised fees in a while. And that's what's causing the problem that we're in now. Thank you for that.
Yeah, and Councilmember, when we revisit this with our consultant to redo it at the five-year mark, Yes. we could change their focus from staff time, which they've already analyzed the first time around, to comparables. So we could, we could shift their, their, the ask of city staff to have them look into comparable.
Right, but I'm also concerned about equity also.
Okay.
Okay?
Me too.
Thank you.
I don't know how big Duggins is, and I can only tell you. But, uh, we have one guy that goes, and he knows that place. And they come every year, and he knows exactly what he does, he knows what to check. And so, it, I, I mean, just saying, and I, I, we know when you're coming.
Yeah, yeah.
What? No, we know when you're coming, and, uh, we're, we're ready. And, uh, but I would say, in my experience, um, your staff comes, it's one person, and Duggins isn't small, and they do an excellent job. And, uh, he doesn't take forever because he knows his job.
Right.
Right? So, you know, I do agree that not changing 453 and, and helping the smaller businesses by freezing the amount, first of all, not raising it, then holding the price for two years, that's excellent. Um, and I agree that placing a, the 5,000, the, the, the hard part would be, well, not the hard part, you would, you need to divide tier one into two, because that's 20, you said that's 2,000 businesses? And the smaller ones staying at 453 and, you know, going down, because you see.
The vast majority are in the tier one, the 2,000. There's not a lot between 10, 20.
There's not a lot of meat.
Yeah, there's, you, yeah, so.
Yeah, no, I get it. And, and just the understanding, what I'm hearing here by Councilmember D. Giovanni is that, and, and what I heard from that business person last week was, perh- I mean, I think they would feel better knowing that, A, their amount didn't go up, B, it's not going up for two more years, and they're, they're here. And then, you know, under five, and then after five to, or 501, uh, five to the 10, you know.
They're paying more.
That's where all, that's where all the businesses are.
And I just want to be clear about something. Fire companies do the less complicated inspections. The dedicated inspectors do the permitted, the mandated, or anything that's technical. And so it takes them much longer to do those kinds of inspections. That's how it's broke up. And the way we got to these fees wasn't by guessing. We actually used the consultant to come up and do actual time that it takes to do it and the whole way through. It's an average, though. So you could have a smaller business that we can do it 30 minutes, 45 minutes, and one of this an hour for just our time. And then you throw in the other, so i- i- it's an average that we're looking at. It's not an exact science. Further, these fees wouldn't go in until next January anyway, because we've already started our inspection process. We literally are going to have to go out to every one of these businesses and, and find out what the square footage is. Because we did this just to try and create something for you that would be different than what we've been doing. We don't have square footage of all of the businesses. We did it only by occupancy type. So now we're going to be having to change this. So if this is enacted, we then, we're going to be going out to these thousands of businesses and determine what the square footage is for each, and then put them into the tiers as directed.
Councilmember D. Giovanni.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you to the Vice Mayor. Um, yeah, because after the, it's, it's about equity, and then you can hear them say, why do I have to pay the same as Home Depot? Blah, 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 just, uh, Vice Mayor, no, I'm, you know, talking about what Vice Mayor was saying. But, uh, I agree. So they feel like that. And then, then they're getting hit already with the tariffs, and we all know that. And like the little shoe shop, and the tailor, and all them, everybody's getting hit with buying their supplies. And all around our city. The Dollar Store went out of business, the $0.25 store at top of the hill, um, they're, they're out of business. With the one right up at John Daly Boulevard. So, um, that, that's pretty hit. So we don't want to lose our small businesses, all our council supporters are small businesses. And we want to make sure that they're supported by, and I know that our city staff and everyone in the city in this council supports our, and we want to be the, to make sure it's equitable. And if we could pause it for the two years and maybe even come back, and if they're really struggling, we don't know what the future brings, if they're out by these tariffs or whatever happens, that we want to make sure they don't, they don't shut down. So that's very important, so. Yeah. Are we allowed to do that, revisit that after the two years? Mr. Nevin, if there's a pause?
Um, we can definitely, you know, with.
Well, with defensive where we're at.
And staff, direction to our consultants, uh, looking.
Yeah, okay. But thank you, and thank you to the Vice Mayor, and the Mayor, and Councilmember Branyo.
Councilmember Manala.
Thank you so much. I think this was really a robust and needed conversation, and I was listening to everyone here. I will say that I agree with Vice Mayor in creating another tier. Um, but what, what we would need from that is, what is the analysis? Like, we're creating this tier. What we do need is how many businesses will fall in that, in that line, right? If we get that information, then it's going to help us even understand what that impact would be. But I hear the rationale what, what Vice Mayor is saying, look, if this is what the cost is, you can't go back because we're, we have to kind of be where the cost is today. But then now around the equity piece of it, okay, that's why you have the, all the different tiers as far as how large the business location is. But for, for clarity purposes, the Dollar Tree that's being closed down is actually like a large corporation. It's not necessarily a small business.
It's not the Dollar Tree is the one, is the, it's not called Dollar Tree, it's the one on John Daly, the family-owned one.
Is that the one that got the, the legacy award last year?
Yeah, the one that's getting the legacy award this year. Yeah, I think we, we all voted on it, and they're getting the legacy. I mean, I.
But it's a family-owned, I don't know.
Um, because I, I, I didn't hear they were closing down the one right at the corner. Um, maybe that's something our, um, economic development specialists could look into. But, I mean, I, I, you know, haven't heard that. I, I know the Dollar Tree.
That's different.
It, which is, um, up there, they are, they are actually.
Correct.
Um, going out of business. But, um, that, we'll have to, um, look into as far as the top of the hill one. Because, you know, that's our legacy buil- business that we are giving an award to. I mean, we should definitely know if they're going out of business. We're actually going to award them a legacy award, right? I haven't heard of that as of yet, but we should find that out, um, in that respect. But I, I do agree with having an extra tier, um, in, in that regard. I also had questions on the commercial vehicle, um, increase. Um, when we, when we do these proposed fees, um, are we comparing them, um, as mentioned by Vice Mayor, to other jurisdictions? Not necessarily just the fire piece, but, you know, the other fees that we are increasing? I'm more looking at kind of the commercial. I'm not looking at, I'm not look, asking to look at fees around recreation or, or youth programs. I think that us as a community, we have, you know, a, a very distinct community in Daly City. And I don't, I wouldn't want to raise any fees to our residents. But I'm talking about commercial.
Right.
So when I talk about commercial, uh, vehicle, uh, fee, we see a lot of them. Is it near the Chinese hospital? There's designated areas. Um, I want to know also, are they be, are they being monitored, you know? Um, in that respect, how do you know they are having, they do have licenses? Um, and if so, I'd also like to know if this fee, because I think it's like $3 that you're raising for it, when I looked at it, just, hold on.
What pages?
It was like really a small amount. Um, but I think unfortunately around those areas, 214th from 210 or something. Um, from the area that it surrounds, a lot of those commercial, uh, vehicles, a lot of trash comes along, a lot of dumping. And so with that, I mean, there is like a cost benefit analysis that we have to do because you'll just see, like, around those areas, there's a lot of people offloading, I don't know. Like, and, and the, and if we look at the commercial vehicles that we are allowing there, some of them are like, um, when, you know, you pick up debris, you know, and it's like, but what's happening with that debris, right? Like, let's look at the correlation. I'm not saying that they're doing it, but there's, yeah, it's just not being well-maintained. And so we're obviously having to take care of the debris. There's going to be a cost to that. I mean, there's some sort of, I just, just want more research into it, yeah, in that respect.
Okay, yeah, thank you for that one. That's, that's must be, your fee 2.16, commercial vehicle permit, changing from 210 to 214 dollars proposed. That, that's the, the 2% that most of the other fees are being increased by.
Yeah.
On a, on a global scale. But we can definitely look into that. As mentioned, the prior focus, when we first met with the consultant or had the consultant do the work for us to put the fees together, was mostly looking at, um, staff time and other things. But we could also ask them regarding that specific one about comparables to what's being charged elsewhere. And that, that's something we can definitely look into.
Yeah, I think, I think it's good to know what's being charged, and also how, how are we monitoring? Just to, you know, I, I, I don't know how, I don't really know what the mechanism is.
Through the chair. Yeah, through the chair.
Go ahead.
Yeah, we have increased our enforcement of the illegal dumping. Police isn't here right now at the moment, but, but we've definitely increased our, our enforcement and our monitoring. And the Illegal Dumping Task Force has, has also increased its efforts. So we are on that subject for sure.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, yeah, I know, it's just, I, we appreciate that greatly, because I know.
Increased cameras, I mean, uh, we've not only put extra cameras, but we've put the license plate readers near the cameras so we can tell who did the dumping. So there, there's a lot of efforts going on there. Just so you know, that has increased, so, yes.
No, no.
I don't know if the chief has anything else to add to that, but that pretty much are, those are our efforts right now.
Okay, great. You, you've answered my question around like monitoring or whatnot. Um, so then police officers are always, or the police assistants are the one that looks at the vehicles for their permits? Because I'm, remember I was understanding how the process works with the commercial vehicles.
Uh, yeah, typically it's the police assistants that, throughout their daily driving, there are certain time zones, certain commercial zones throughout the city where certain-sized vehicles are only allowed to park overnight. Um, they're not allowed to park anywhere else in the city other than these commercial zones. Um, and so they are looking for expired, not listed permits, um, as well as just violation of timeframes as well to try and keep them moving throughout the day so they don't. One of the issues we had was where they would park, they wouldn't have any business, and so they would stay parked for days on end. Um, so just to keep vehicles moving, trash cleaned up, things of that nature. But I will go back, verify some stats on the numbers that we've been writing for some of those specific locations. Um, and just make sure again that, you know, oftentimes our parking enforcement efforts go to the hot topic of the day, which is constantly evolving, either based on community complaints or concerns or things that are brought up through the city. Um, so I'll make sure that that's one of the areas that we're focusing on again.
Okay, great. Well, I'm, I'm glad to hear that also the ALPR is helping on illegal dumping as well.
For sure.
Yeah. I mean, I know our community, a lot of, you know, concerns around that.
Yes.
And keeping our communities litter-free. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Um, okay, so going back to the, the budget piece, um, we are going to have an analysis on comparisons now to other jurisdictions. The following, in the next, when is that?
Um, we plan, we did the first study with our consultant in twenty-two. So we plan on starting that process, um, next calendar year with the consultant to bring to you probably in the second year of the budget cycle.
Okay. And then I also know that, um, other jurisdictions have reached out to me and mentioned, hey, Daly City's fees need to be updated.
Exactly.
Because there's an analysis in the region around development fees. And we are behind, and it's great to have colleagues in other cities that, you know, are looking out as well as, as saying like, hey, we're behind in that respect. And so I just want to make sure that as we move into a new consultant, there is already some analysis that's being done regionally that we take into that study. Um, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel, but also, you know, if we have another consultant. But I believe there is a regional study that is, has already happened around development fees. And so everyone around us knows our fees are not up to par. Um, and so, you know, looking at the trajectory and my conversation or dialogue earlier around, uh, revenue, you know, we don't want to make it harder for developers or whatnot, but if we're already behind and they're not coming here, I mean, it's probably another issue, right? But then if, if, if they know everyone else around, this is the standard fee, someone next door has this fee, someone. Um, it's just getting, I getting close to it, understanding we are unique. We don't have a lot of development sites, but it, um, it's just get, I think we just need to revisit it. And I know that this is something, that's why we're here today. It's just to add another layer of, um, research that's already done so that you have more tools when you hire the consultant.
Yeah, thank you for that. And there, there are, as you mentioned, uh, various fees that we have throughout the city. So we're really looking at, um, some general user fees and other things like that. Uh, we did, uh, Economic and Community Development had a consultant look at our, uh, AB sixteen-hundred development fees, or, sorry, Amanda was working with a consultant on our AB sixteen-hundred fees. And we did have that presentation, I believe, late in two thousand twenty-four. And we significantly, I think, increased some of those fees specifically. But it's definitely, I, I appreciate you bringing it back on our radar about looking at that.
Okay. No, thank you so much. I know, um, this is a lot of, um, work and everything. And so, uh, really appreciate it. I think that, um, yeah, I'm, I'm, I, if I see fees around, um, there are some fees that are being increased that I see around some resident, um, kind of recreational pieces. Um, and are, are they being raised because of just a general, um, two percent? Or their rationale even for those being raised? I think for aquatics, um, and job readiness. I, I just want to understand, like, the, the increases within, like, um, youth or, and senior programming.
So in, um, Attachment C, I'm not sure if you have that. Um, but there's a list of all of the fees in recreation that are being increased. So each one has it listed. So, um, for example, like the mini hoops is increased, um, fee adjustment due to hourly wage increase and supply costs. Um, there is like, um, where was it? The job readiness program, the fee adjustment due to its transitioning from a pilot program, and the actual number of hours needed to run the program. So we do have the full list. If there's a specific one on there, I can definitely let you know what that reasoning is.
Thank you. No, I think this is a great, um, attachment and, um, is helpful so that people understand, uh, why there's even those nominal fees um, added to our community members.
Yeah, so Attachment C, for anything that was outside of that two percent increase, it's reflected on this attachment.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. So, um, I'd like to, um, make a motion to op- open the public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, are there any public comments on this issue? Seeing none, can I get a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close? Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Um, are there any other further discussions, questions, comments? Vice Mayor Glenn Sevester.
I'll make this quick, mayor. Uh, again, I want to reiterate to staff uh, how important this is and all the work you've done thus far. And I was watching, uh, as councilmember Manalo was speaking, I says, what is she looking at? Because the one that I was looking at, the master fee, and it says clean, I was going to ask, do we have what it was before and what you're going up to? And I had to look, oh, there it is. So that's, I, and I get it because I had underscored five-point-three-one. And I guess that's fire alarm, that's false alarm, seven-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars? False alarm. So, uh, so what, i- if a business, the fire alarm goes off and ends up being a false alarm for no particular reason, just went off, they will be charged seven-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars, right? Well, that's quite a bit on the first offense. Uh, if, uh, if anything, they should get a severe, oh, here comes the chief, yes, sir.
Ju- just to clarify, that, that was designed to actually be a zero revenue to the city because we wanted property business owners to maintain their fire alarms. They don't. And so we end up responding thousands of times to alarm sounding. So we, we implemented that fee. It's very high. And usually what it does is they decide they'd rather spend the money fixing their system than paying us that money. I think we generate around thirty thousand a year. So it has worked. Where people have decided to fix that system and not get charged the third level, which we've had some of those, but finally they decided it's better to spend the money towards that versus spending the money on us sending them a bill for it. So our, our goal of that was to go like to zero so we wouldn't have false alarms for systems that aren't maintained properly.
Well, chief, I thank you so much for that because that brings me, that brings me to eight-oh-seven, to which is twenty-five dollars and fifty dollars. I think we need to raise that up, so folks, it's for police. See? It's, I, I, I mean, you know, I, I don't know if it's just follow fire, but that would be a lot. But it's just something to think about because I responded to a lot of false alarm before and I got, I said, we need to start charging folks. So it, it, no, it's just a thought, okay?
You got me, I'm out one. I don't have the answer, so.
All right. Yeah, just a thought. I, I just see the big difference. So, um, in closing, I would like to say, uh, again, I appreciate all the work that you've done. And I, I'm sure, uh, for Ms. Halber and you, Mr. Nevin, it's kind of difficult. Well, what is the council want? They don't want to charge, they don't want to charge the community anything, and they want equity, but yet they want to up the prices. I, I, I know it's difficult. And, uh, I guess armed with the, what you've heard both sides, um, I don't know the secret to success, but I do know the secret to failure, and that's trying to satisfy everyone. So continue doing your best, and, uh, it's really much appreciated. And we will get through this. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, vice mayor. Are there any other, um, questions, comments? Okay. So with that, I'd like to, um, does anybody want to make a motion to adopt the resolution? I heard, I know that we wanted to add the tiers.
Motion to adopt the resolution with additional, uh, tier. Um, moving the fire inspection to having five tiers um, in addition to a tier with, uh, five to ten thousand.
And one to five. And one to five.
It's, tier one is one to five. So I'm seeing
Tier one is one to five.
Or, or up to five, sorry. Just because we're, we're charging businesses less than a thousand, so.
Up to, yeah.
Up to five.
Yeah. So I, the only change I'm doing is putting in the tier from five to ten, which I said earlier.
And would, pardon me, who's the mayor? Would we remove under ten then?
Nope.
No, that would be the first tier, under, under
Five.
Under five, and then the second tier would be up to ten.
Yeah.
Be five to ten.
Zero, zero, one.
Or nine, 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 basically.
If, sure, if, if we want to run through the tiers, I, I see tier one is under five thousand square feet.
Correct.
Tier two is five thousand and one to ten thousand square feet.
Correct.
Tier three, ten thousand to twenty thousand square feet.
You can't
We gotta add a one.
Thousand and one, yeah.
To twenty thousand square feet.
Yeah.
Tier
Yeah.
Four, twenty thousand and one square feet to forty-five thousand square feet. Tier five, above forty-five thousand square feet, which would be one thousand three hundred and sixty dollars.
Excellent.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. So we have a first and a second. That will include the modified tier system.
Correct.
Um, we got a second. So can we get a
Second.
Throw it down to Ms. City Clerk for a vote call, please.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Peranio?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. So, um, heading down to item number sixteen, are there any council committee reports?
Uh, yeah.
Gotcha.
I have one.
Does anybody want to lead us off? Vice Mayor Glenn Sevester.
Thank you, mayor. Um, I attended on April sixteenth the County of San Mateo Department of Emergency Management, to which we discussed the budget, uh, even prior to that. Uh, actually, uh, drove down to Redwood City twice on one day. Even though I was on Zoom, I drove down thinking it was a back-to-back meeting, but when I got down there, the meeting was the following day. So Department of Emergency Management, where we discussed the budget and for radio services for police through Department of Emergency Management. Daly City's gonna have to be paying a lot more, to which I've given the information to our city manager, who forwarded to our, uh, uh, Mr. Nevin of our budget. What I also learned is to have something called A E P. Uh, activating emergency, I think it's programming. I, I have it. A E P, uh, um, evacuation plan. So as I may have mentioned earlier, if there's a fire or some kind of catastrophe in Daly City, each city has access to this, uh, plan, uh, to which, uh, with police and fire, they can help coordinate and emergency responders, help coordinate an evacuation plan. I mean, I saw a sample of this plan and it is very good. I mean, if you pick a certain area in Daly City, we'll tell you how many cars are in that area and how long it would take to get the cars out. And part of the fees that we're paying, we get access to that. So that's good to know. So, uh, that's what I found, and I've already given the information to, uh, this, uh, city manager. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, vice mayor. Are there any other, uh, council committee reports? Um, I'll go ahead and share. Um, I attended the Peninsula Clean Energy meeting on April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five. Um, I'm just gonna share a couple of highlights. Um, one, we had a C- CEO report on, they're gonna be implementing a new innovation strategy department within PCE, where they're gonna be focusing on organizational strategy, innovation, and new areas of work, revenue diversification, and, um, subject matters expertise. Um, another thing that they also implemented is that PCE community, uh, solar project and those palos is not operational, so that's gonna be part, that's gonna be, uh, energy, that's gonna be part of our grid as well. Um, one of the other issues that are now very prevalent because of, um, the tariffs that were implemented is, um, because of a hundred-and-forty-five percent tariff increase with China,
Yeah.
we are going to be experiencing with the b- battery energy storage system. Um, and right best project is, is gonna be, um, on hold. So, um, that project is a two-hundred-megawatt utility solar, scale solar facility located in Merced County. And because of these tariffs, they're putting some, um, some pauses on, on putting that onto, into getting into online. Uh, we had a very fruitful discussion about, um, PCE's stance on Senate Bill five-forty, known as the Pathways Bill. It's a California legislation designed to expand and regionalize the state's electricity markets, aiming to lower energy costs, improve grid reliability, and accelerate the transition to clean energy while preserving California's authority over key policy areas. Um, the bill enables California's Independent System Operator, or CAISO, to operate in a broader Western energy market governed by an independent regional organization, which is probably gonna be appointed federally. So there's some cautious caution with that in terms of who's gonna be, um, part of that in, a regional organization board. Um, so provided certain conditions and safeguards are met, it also allows CAISO to delay joining until after January first, two thousand twenty-seven, to assess the political and market environment. So, um, what they did, which is actually something that I really appreciated, was that they brought, um, two different people from two different stances. Um, one person that, uh, talked about, that was a proponent, and then there was also a critic of S B five-forty. So, um, the proponent expressed that it will have several benefits, projected annual savings, about eight-hundred million for ratepayers, reduced air pollution, enhanced grid reliability, especially during extreme weather, and optimized, optimized use of renewable sources. Some critics that talk about S B five-forty feels like it'll undermine California's landmark climate policies, such as the renewables portfolio standard, or RPS, by exposing them to legal challenges from out-of-state fossil fuel interests and potentially forcing California to subsidize coal power if federal policy shifts. So it depends, um, on the influences of those at the federal government level. Uh, there are concerns about the loss of state control, the influence of corporate and out-of-state interests um, over market rules, and the absence of a clear exit strategy if the regional system proves detrimental. Um, so we were able to, it was just informational se- um, session. Um, I think one thing that, um, that stood out to me was our fruitful discussion and, um, understanding both sides of the coin before Peninsula Clean Energy decides to, um, come up to vote and seeing where our stance is with that specific policy measure. Okay? All right. Are there any other council committee reports? Okay, seeing none. Um, city council reports. Are there any city council reports? Councilmember Pam Giovanni.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make it very brief, but I see that Mr. Niese's out there and I want to thank her for the, uh, we always had the volunteer luncheon. And for our, we had a hundred and fifty in attendance, but I understand there would have been over two hundred. So the people know that our city runs on volunteers and is so appreciative of all the departments. And there were volunteers, our city manager, our police, our fire, H R, Mr. Nevin, Alelani, I mean, everyone, Public Works, everyone came to volunteer to to serve one another, and, and to let them know that how much we appreciate them. And some of them have volunteered for twenty-five, thirty years, and it's something where everybody looks forward to, and appreciative everywhere, from the walkabout to every single facility has volunteers. So, that, I think that, I don't know about other cities, but I have heard great things about when people talk about the deli and everywhere. It's saturated here with volunteers, and, uh, so much appreciated with that. Also, based on recreation, we had our first special needs sensory, uh, that was developed by our recreation, which the parents were very appreciative, and Ray, and all your great employees, um, Ms. Denise, uh, were very, um, how do I say it? Very, it was very heartfelt, and to listen to them with David and all them, and how they created everything for the, for the children, so that everyone could be included in Daly City, they wouldn't have to drive to other cities. We have something for them here. And I would say, well-attended is beyond words. The library, everyone was there. So, um, I, there's not enough to say about everything we have, you know, the resource thing is sermoni. I mean, it's something like, as soon as you go to one event, then you gotta get ready for the next one. And that's a good thing, so appreciating the staff, because they work so hard. Um, and I know it, it can be tiring, but they do it with a lot of heart. So I think that's why they live, they come here in Daly City. So, um, because Shayla already knows that people from other libraries have come to me and said, "How do I get a job in the library in Daly City?" I said, "What?" And they said, "No, we love that Shayla." So I said, "Oh, see, there you go." But, um, thank you for that, and I think that, um, in regards to, um, Councilmember Sylvester's O E S, I did find out that another city has, um, done a contract with South San Francisco Dispatch. And I can't remember exactly which one it is, but I'm sure you'll find out. So there's a lot of partnering going on between, um, South San Francisco and another city. And, um, and we know that Coleman has one as well. Because I know he was ta- talking about the monies, and he's really good about looking into it. And the chief, I think he's already gone, and, uh, the fire chief as well, and the city manager. So that's something that I just found out, that they are, they said that they have room to partner with Daly City. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor.
Are there any other, uh, city council, uh, Councilwoman Teresa Prano?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, and I would say that I just piggyback on the exciting fun I had with many of you serving. I enjoyed it again. It was, it, I appreciate my job more and more, when you do the hard work. Opal did a great job. I worked with, uh, Tatum, and, uh, I will say that the best part was working with the staff serving, so that, for me, was the best part, and seeing the happy faces. Everybody was happy, the food was amazing. We should go eat lunch over there, I'm telling you, it should be on my menu. But, um, I'd also like to say that, uh, the Daly City Host Lions Club had a past, a Pasta Bingo event. Well-attended, sellout, and, uh, it, the next one's in September, so if anyone's interested, keep your eye out for that.
The Bingo.
Yo, that's the Pasta Bingo, that's the Pasta Bingo. And then I did attend our first annual, our first meeting of the Daly City Women's Commission. We honored Ms. Phyllis, it was beautiful. But I can't tell you how proud I was to, to be there, and just you feel this pride, and you feel this great pride in, in seeing those women sitting there and knowing that they're gonna ma- make a difference in many of our lives. And, um, and I also took, uh, had a moment, I was lucky to be able to go by Thomas Polacita on Saturday, uh, Manifoe, uh, mentioned to me, and the Ata My Dance Group. And I'll tell you, I, and I saw, um, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester's lovely wife, Nita, and she was there. He didn't know that, did he? She was there, uh, and, but what was so beautiful, and I'll make it short, was all the young girls on that stage, from every age, and they were so, you could see the pride in dancing their heritage, you know, their dancing and their outfits, and just the whole experience, it really touched, uh, touched my heart. So I wanted to say that, and, uh, I will say also as well, Denise, spring fun day. Too much fun, too much fun. It makes me want to be a kid to run over there and find the golden egg. So, thank you very much for doing that, it makes all the difference. And that's it, on my end, thank you.
So much. Um, any other? Uh, Councilmember Manalo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will echo that it was an another amazing spring day event. Such excellent work, so organized. I mean, to have so many children there, and yet it was re- it really organized year after year. It was great, um, and thank you for all the volunteers, the staff, that put on joy for our children. That's what it really is, is a really, um, a time for the kids. And also, you know, the recreation staff and department has always been inclusive, but taking it to a step further, I listening to a parent advocate, um, Eric Enriquez, you know, to provide an all sensory activity, and, I mean, it, it was really wonderful. You know, and so thank you for giving that moment to them, and I know there's many more. But seeing the joy and happiness with all the children is really, is really what it's about. And that is what you are creating in our Daly City community. And it continues to show with everyone, from recreation to the library, to the police and fire and public works and our ways of life, I mean, everyone just comes together to just, you know, build community, uh, day in and day out. Also, wanted to share, I joined the Peninsula Division, um, Cal Cities Reception. They had their city leader summit, um, this past week, um, but, you know, I couldn't attending that day, but I did join them for their reception with all of the Peninsula Division. It extends from, um, all the way from San Francisco, I think all the way down to Santa Clara, is what it covers. But, um, Daly City falls under the Peninsula Division. And then, um, also the volunteer luncheon. Um, I want to thank everyone that volunteered to serve them, um, from all of the amazing staff. Um, and thank you, Councilmember Prano, for also serving the volunteers. I was.
Leilani.
And Leilani, and, um, and, and also Tim, and city manager Tom, and Natalie, I, I mean, every, 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 everyone. And, and.
Our city treasurer, Mr. Nevin, was there?
And Mr. Nevin, and, no, it was, it was really, really.
City manager was there.
Great, I know, I, 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 it was incognito with, when I saw city manager, I said, "Oh," he was wearing his Daly City hat.
Oh, did he have his Batman uniform?
But it was, it, I mean, they were so happy, if you were in the room, you just felt like all of the volunteers really feel so happy and appre- that they were appreciated, but they do it because they care about the community. And many of them for decades long, day in and day out. Um, and so, and shout out to Opal, who, you know, makes the delicious meal where everyone, like, you know, feels like they're dining out somewhere. And getting the amazing food. And so, I couldn't stay that long, I wanted to just stop in and say thank you real quick, um, before my lunch break was over, but that was really, really wonderful. Also joined Mayor Rod at the Brisbane Council of Cities, um, event and dinner. Right there, our neighbors next door, which, um, they had, um, an event. And for those of you that are, uh, watching, maybe under, wanting to understand what Council of Cities is, is basically every month, there is a meeting with all of the city councils and a representative of the County of San Mateo, where we all meet and are able to, uh, network as well as like build across, um, the county. And so, it happens, um, once a month. And so, uh, this past, was it in March? Or February?
I think it's February.
February?
Yeah.
Yeah, in February, um, Mayor Rod, um, um, had us hosting that, that meeting at, uh, Wessex Jones. And so, I also wanted to say I was able to join the Peninsula Book Collaborative, where they, uh, did do, um, a session with community members to ask, um, feedback on the Magical Bridge Playground. That will be, um, at Hillside Park. And so they were just getting feedback from community members and, also, uh, with Joyce Cabrera that was there, um, who we did chat, we said we might be long-lost cousins, because, you know, my middle name is Cabrera, and is from the same region in the Philippines, and so you never know. But it was, um, great that the Peninsula, um, Book Collaborative holds that space for community. And they do a lot of programming for young children and, um, all of, um, the different cultural, um, heritage months, and also just having a space, you know, if we need, when we grew up, what we had, there was a whole bunch of Barnes and Nobles, smaller bookstores, uh, you know, and whatnot, but they, they host that space there, and they do great collaborations also, um, with our library. So, it's, oh, it's what you call, um, community together. And then lastly, I, there was a meeting, um, that we did have with a, an, uh, organization that is going to bring forth, um, a hero and heroine, a global hero or heroine, um, in the, in the community. I'm Dr. Jose Rizal, but I will let, um, our, Mr. Mayor speak on that. But, uh, w- we did have a meeting together in that, but I will let him share with everyone some very exciting news, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Manalo. Um, I have a, um, a few announcements, I'm not gonna repeat a lot of the stuff, because we were at some of these sa- same things, but, um, Friday, April twenty-fifth, I was able to, um, attend a tour of Seton Medical Center, um, in the morning with, uh, Jackie Matouran, who's the Director of Emergency Services, Marcel Bameo, uh, Bameo, and Malcolm Lee. They just wanted to kind of like show, like, um, the incremental steps that they're doing improvement to, to city, of to Seaton Medical Center. Um, I shared some of my grievances and some of my critiques, and seeing what they have done so far in terms of improvements, um, it looks hopeful. And one of their steps to improve, uh, the perception of Seton Medical Center is to, to get out and extend their invitations to the community, so. So I, I told them, like, um, you know, Seton Medical Center is a, is a crown jewel in Daly City, and, but then the perceptions of it is very, very negative, and they're taking the small steps of just creating, uh, relationships. And so hopefully, um, you know, there's no way but we can go up with our relationships with, with Seton, and hopefully changing the perception, uh, and supporting our labor and nurses and doctors over there as well. And then, piggybacking on what Councilmember, um, Justin Manalo was talking about, was we met with the Jose Rizal International Foundation. Just to give you a short brief of who Dr. Jose Rizal is, he wa- he is a national figure in the Philippines, well-educated, um, Filipino who was educated in Europe, got to learn like seven languages, um, was also, um, influenced through the different social and political contexts in Europe, and used those same principles and values in education of like the French Revolution, that he learned while he was in Europe, and helped galvanize the, the Philippines and the Filipinos to, um, towards independence and the ouster of Spanish occupation in the Philippines. So Dr. Jose Rizal was a person that, um, created this organization called La Liga Filipino, where was, which was used as a way to galvanize and create a critical mass in the Philippines to understand the social, political context of oppression in the Philippines. So, we met with the leaders and the, and one of the sculptors of the Jose Rizal International Foundation. Uh, the reason why we met was because they are erecting a, let's say, eleven-foot monument in Colorado Springs. And I was like, Colorado Springs, are there Filipinos there? But yeah, there is, because of military. But part of this foundation is to see if they can ha- if there's interest in different Filipino communities. One of these communities was Daly City, to see if we can, um, have something of like a monument, maybe not like eleven foot, but something, um, that, uh, acknowledges Dr. Jose Rizal and what it means to not just the Filipino community, but our global community, about what he has done for, um, the people in the Philippines. So they're actually, uh, um, having a, a ceremony in July twenty-seventh in Colorado Springs, that they invited us to go to, but also just had this interest of seeing if we can have something here in Daly City. So, with that, I'd, I'd like to maybe work with the, a city manager of creating an ad hoc committee, since we already got the ball rolling of myself and Councilmember Manalo, to have an ad hoc committee to study and see the feasibility and opportunity to see if we can have it here in, in Daly City. And then my other announcements is, um, if people are free Wednesday, we have the new poet, poet laureate for the, um, D C P L A on April thirtieth from six thirty to seven, and then afterwards, there is a reception, so we're all excited. I think when we talk about the D C P L A and the poet laureate, we have also influenced and shaped, um, poetry in the county, which has influenced them to actually have a county poet laureate, so. And a lot of the poet laureates have gone on from different, uh, from high school to colleges and universities. And I think, I believe our latest poet laureate is now going to Yale, is that right?
Yeah.
Is it Yale? I don't know. But yeah, I know he got accepted there.
I mean, he got accepted there, it's if, is he gonna choose to go or not?
I don't know if he's gonna go, but, um, but just seeing the influence and, um, the type of talent that we have in Daly City is very, um, is, is proud to represent. So I'm really, really proud of those different events. And also just encourage everybody to go on our socia ls and to go to the Daly City, uh, gov, um, Instagram page with the many events that are gonna be happening in an, all the way till October. I think we already have, I mean, we already have the rest of the whole calendar, um, set, but if you want to know what's going on in the city, we have a list of events, and we have posts that already have some preliminary information, so please check it out to the public out there. Okay, um, any other? Okay, I'm gonna shoot it down to staff, we're good? Okay, uh, we're gonna go to adjournment and memory. Does anybody like to go first? I know there's, um, a handful. Okay.
I'd like to, uh, I'd like to take the time to, uh, remember the mother of Angie Zermino. She, uh, works in the city manager's office, assist, uh, Executive Admin Assistant. And her mom passed, also is, she is the mother of Maria Cortez, who was our past city clerk.
Yes.
Teresa had nine children. And, uh, so this just happened. And, uh, so wanted to take the time to, to ask people, I'm, you know, to send, to have prayers set, so. That's very important, I, and I noticed you have the Pope, so I guess I'm gonna wait on that one. I noticed that. But anyway, thank you, and it, just to take the time to, you know, send up a prayer and, and condolences to Angie. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. I know we have one from Vice Mayor, uh, Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm so sorry to hear
Yeah, me too.
about that. Is it some way possible, uh, Tom, maybe you can get a card and we can all sign it?
Yeah.
Please, I think, uh, that would go a long way as well.
Yes.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, uh, this particular difficult time, I have two. I'll start off with the first one, Annalyn. I'll start off with the first one, Analin Zamonte Elizar. And I'm leaving out some information because I'm going to give you that information. Just give you a, just as to the, a story here. This is written by her daughter. As a devoted mother of our family, she gave endlessly of herself, her time, her laughter, her wisdom, and above all, her love. Her family was the center of her world, and she poured her heart into every role she held, not just as a mother, but as a sister, an aunt, and a friend, both the good and in the hard times. We always admired her loyalty and nurturing character as she built our family filled with love and laughter, raising us three kids together with my sister and brother. And a loving wife to my father, Papa Edwin, who was also in the same profession as she was. She was not only our mother, but our greatest hero, our source of comfort, and our example of everything good in this world. She has the same birthday as me. However, she left us on April 14th, 2025, at the age of 51. She's a retired Colonel of the Philippine National Police, a respected officer. In uniform, she stood as a guardian, courageous, principled, and deeply compassionate. Her colleagues knew her not just for her sharp instincts and steady resolve, but for her kindness, her sense of humor, and her unwavering moral compass. Though words cannot fully capture the depth of our grief, nor the beauty of the life she lived, we find comfort in the legacy that she leaves behind, one of love, service, and quiet strength. She touched countless lives, and her absence leaves a silence that echoes far and wide. I've done many trips to the Philippines, uh, almost eight years, every year in a row on a goodwill mission, and she was always there to help, help us all and get us through and take us out to the various provinces where we would donate equipment. And she was a nurse. And the second one, I went to school with this particular person. And, uh, Samuel Craig, lovelily referred to as Sam, was born on March 17th, 1951, in Birmingham, Alabama, to his parents, David and Lucille Craig. He was the second oldest of seven children. His father moved the family to California in 1965, and Sam later attended Balboa High School, where he excelled in both football and baseball. He also served as president of the Black Student Union, demonstrating his early commitment to advocacy and unity. Samuel dreamed of following in his father's footsteps to become a dentist. And subsequently, he enrolled in the School of Dentistry Pre-Dental Program at San Francisco City College. However, the police department caught him first. His commitment to personal growth led him to later graduate from USF, earning his BS degree in organizational behavior. He entered the police academy in 1978, about 10 months before I entered the police academy, where he served with integrity, he championed equity. During his career, he received numerous certificates and awards. These honors, his work ethic, and his personal integrity led to his promotion to Deputy Chief in 2007. And he was serving at the airport where he retired in 2008. That's three years before I retired in 2011. On April 9th, 2025, the strong pillar of our family went home to be with the Lord. He will deeply be missed, but fondly remembered for his kindness, leadership, and the love he poured into all that he did will remain. Samuel Craig. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have a couple of, um, adjournment memory, and then I'll have Councilmember De Giovanni conclude. The first one I want to, um, adjourn in is the victims of the Lapu-Lapu Festival in Vancouver. So it's with a heavy heart to adjourn a memory of the victims of the tragic incident that occurred during the Lapu-Lapu Day Festival in Vancouver, Canada, on the evening of April 26th, 2025. What began as a joyful celebration of Filipino heritage and community turned into an unimaginable tragedy when a vehicle drove into a crowd of festival goers, resulting in the deaths of at least 11 people, including a five-year-old child, and injuring dozens more. The annual Lapu-Lapu Festival, attended by nearly 100,000 people, is cherished event that honors Filipino culture and commemorates the legacy of Lapu-Lapu, a national hero who resisted colonization. This year, the festival was marred by a sense of violence described by the Vancouver Police as the darkest day in their city's history. Eyewitnesses recounted scenes of chaos and heartbreak with bystanders and first responders rushing to aid the injured amidst the devastation. Let us recognize also the bravery of those who intervene and dedication of first responders and who provided, um, the, the, provided aid in amongst the chaos. I'd like to adjourn the memory and honor of their lives through our collective commitment to compassion, unity, and peace. The second one i- is very, very, um, fresh off the presses. I don't like to be the bearer of bad news, but, um, the father of Ray Buen Ventura, our former, former council member and, um, mayor, um, his father passed away, Alfredo Francisco Buen Ventura. He passed today, and we'll probably have more information. I'll probably do another adjournment memory. But he pa- he was, he was born December 23rd, 1930, and he passed today, April 28th, 2025. So, um, city manager, I think if we could hop on and get another card and we could all sign as well. And then I'm going to pass it on to you, Councilmember De Giovanni.
Yeah, I'd like to close in the memory of Pope Francisco, otherwise known as Papa Francisco. Most of you already know the story of his life as being a Jesuit and how he was an Italian that grew up in Argentina, always living humbly and being the conscious of the world. This is how we remember him in life. And now that he's passed on, I think that his humility, his humanity, his compassion, his love, his ongoing, uh, negotiating for peace for the world. And he even stayed in touch every single day and contacted that church in Gaza every single day. So he stayed in touch in people didn't know many ways. He lived in that little room, and when he, as he passed, and then many of you know him posting, that he just wanted the wooden box with a simple cross at the level of the people because it was the people who he loved and served. So I think that a lot of us, again, Catholics, non-Catholics, he touched a lot of us. And to emulate him or to be like him or to give that compassion, to serve the poor, for those that are hungry, not to serve selves, not to have titles, but even his tailor and said that he could come and wear gold, but he would never wear gold. He would go inside and get his favorite Argentinian ice cream on his own. He would even go and purchase in the stores his glasses on his own. So this is a testament to how, of course, not to be a pope, he went from an arbitro to a pope or a Jesuit, but it is a testament to how, why are we here? And who are we serving? And why do not let the outside get to us and be compassionate to one another? Because I think if you remove so much, we all have the commonality and we can give the love and compassion and respect to one another and continue forward with that and continue to serve our communities in whatever capacity and just to give of ourselves and our love. So may he rest in peace and love. Papa Francisco, who has touched so many, and his light will not ever be dim and perpetual light. His memory is a blessing to many of us. Thank you for allowing me to close in his memory for all of us.
So with that, I'd like to offer a moment of silence.
Oh, here.
Oh, my, sorry. Thank you, Vice Mayor. We also have, um, employees and relatives of.
Oh, yeah.
City manager. So I would also like to close, uh, on behalf of Kadir Mohamed Adman, who's a grandfather to police assistant, Assistant Ibrahim Ilyan. And so with that, I'd like to, um, offer a moment of silence.